Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting in order. This is a special meeting, our work session for May 13th, 2019. And I hope that all the mothers were honored yesterday and had a wonderful Mother's Day this past weekend. And we're quickly moving toward the end of another school year. And I want to encourage students and parents to remain focused and finish the course well. And it'll be, it's right around the corner, it'll be here before you know it. So our first item tonight is our, on our agenda is Resolution 19-30. Resolution authorizing specific pure crew procurement. So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Shandor and let him take his time.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, Board members. I'm going to pass this one to Mr. Vol, and he's going to share some information related to this resolution. Mr. Vol?
Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. We have a resolution this evening, 19-30. It's a resolution authorizing a specific procurement of more than $50,000. There are nine items on this resolution for your consideration and approval. We bring this to you this evening because six of the nine items on the list are time-sensitive. Four are for capital outlay projects, for work that will commence this summer. And your approval is required before the requisition can be submitted to the county. In addition, we have two items for modifications to existing purchasers and require your approval before we can move forward with those two items. So that's the summary.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? I have one quick question, and it's just a clarification. And maybe Dr. James may be the appropriate one to answer this, or you, Dr. Shandor? I'm not sure. Just to clarify for those out there, I already know the answer to this. But when we, and part of this procurement was the renovation for the library at York High School. We're not removing all the books out of the library, is that correct?
No, we're not.
Okay. I know that was some concern that some individuals had had brought up, so I just wanted to make sure they understood that, that this is just an update for technology and learning spaces for the high schoolers to use at the high schools.
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right. So we need a motion and a second to approve of the Resolution 19-30. If there are no other questions, authorizing the specific procurement as it was, as it's listed.
I move approval. Second.
Okay. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion's made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mr. Hickman-Botham to approve Resolution 19-30. A resolution to approve specific school division procurement. Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman-Botham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So now we have several presentations this evening. We have about six, and I understand they're not super-long presentations. So instead of going through each one, I'm just going to turn it all over to you, Dr. Shandor, and take it from there and move through these.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Our first presentation this evening is a presentation on Strategic Plan Goal 2, Objective 2.4, Workplace Readiness. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Karen Cagle, Associate Director of Educational Technology and Innovation. Dr. Cagle?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight I will provide a strategic plan status update on the objective addressing how our schools are measuring student demonstration of workplace readiness skills. This objective is part of the comprehensive career readiness program I shared in the March work session. As we are building and implementing a program that supports career exploration and preparation, it is important that we monitor student progress towards developing the necessary skills to be career-ready. Because this is a new objective, I'd like to share our plans to ensure students are equipped to be successful in the workplace. Our first step was to identify the skills that students should recognize and apply in the world of work. We chose to use the Virginia Board of Education's adopted list of workplace readiness skills identified by Virginia employers from all industry sectors as ones that will best prepare students to enter the workforce and be successful in their chosen careers. The 21 skills fall into one of three categories: personal qualities, professional knowledge and skills, and technology literacy. I have provided you with a copy of the workplace readiness skills, and these can also be accessed from the Virginia Department of Education website. These skills are currently taught in the CTE, in all CTE courses, and will be used to guide the expectations of both middle school students participating in the new career investigations course and high school students involved in work-related experiences. At the middle school level, beginning next year, students will be required to take our new career investigations course or an equivalent CTE course. This course is designed for students to demonstrate workplace readiness skills as well as make connections between the work environment and citizenship. The class will provide opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning through the teaching and application of practical factors in each unit within the course. So what are practical factors? These are learning experiences where students apply workplace readiness skills in a real-world setting. For instance, one of the personal qualities expected in the workplace is a positive work ethic, which includes arriving to work on time. Students might be required to keep a log of how they independently wake up each morning and prepare for their workday so they are ready to catch their bus or their ride on time. This is relevant to their current reality as well as their future career. The measure of workplace readiness skills for middle school students will be their ability to successfully demonstrate knowledge of workplace readiness skills and the application of practical factors as a part of the required career investigations course. Now let's look at high school. During the December work session, I shared the strategic plan objective stating that by FY '22, all YCSD students will complete an internship, mentorship, or similar work-related experience prior to graduation. The purpose for these experiences is to help our students develop essential skills necessary in the workplace as well as help them discover careers they might or might not want to pursue. The expectations of the courses involving work-related experiences will be used to measure high school students' workplace readiness skills. Let's take a moment to look at the expectations of these courses. York County schools offer a variety of opportunities for work-related experiences, including our marketing co-op courses. Successful completion of these courses include 540 hours of supervised on-the-job training, which occurs in an approved local marketing business. We also offer a career mentorship course that is a non-paid work-based experience that requires students to log 140 hours in a sponsoring work site and present a final project to earn one credit. The cooperative education course combines CTE classroom instruction with paid employment that is directly related to a student's plan of study. Students normally work between 11 and 15 hours per week to achieve a minimum of 396 hours. Next school year, 11th and 12th grade students will be able to earn elective credit for summer or after-school job experiences. A supervisor evaluation and reflection activity will be required for students to pass this course. The credit for work experience should be related to a student's career interests. In addition, we have two other classes that offer work-related experiences for students with disabilities. Students in project experience work a minimum of 60 minutes per day, Monday through Friday, at a workplace within the community. Project Search students work five and a half hours each day throughout the school year at an internship with Centerra Hospital or Fort Eustis. The goal of Project Search is full-time supported employment for the students who qualify for this course. Additional courses that include mentorship completions or worksite experience are offered at New Horizons Regional Center. This includes the Governor's School Environmental Science Mentorship, as well as worksite experiences in the Automotive Technology, Health Science, and Human Science Career Clusters. The measure of workplace readiness skills in these classes is reflected in the expectations of successful completion of the courses. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention as I have shared our measures of workplace readiness. Are there any questions for me at this time?
So one is, how is it coming along with the business community and the folks that are signing up to offer their, yeah, how's that?
Yeah, we have approximately 91 businesses right now. We have several that are interested in providing the support in these areas, the internships and the mentorships. So I think, and our school counselors have received training to start helping those students find a fit that need one.
So we've had a number of those folks who are in that, engaged in, so to speak, participate in job fairs. So a lot of them come to our career fairs. I know a TAB, the most recent one last one, a TAB high school was really well-attended. All 16 career clusters were there.
So the demand of our students looking for those opportunities, we should have...
We'll have more information as we move forward. Right now, we're in the process of helping those students be placed for next year. So, but we need more businesses to become involved, so...
That's why I was kind of, let's get the commercial out.
Yes, engaged in YCSD.
Exactly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
At the middle school level, the career investigations class is going to start, is that going to take the place of one of the elective students get to choose, or?
Yes, that's a semester course.
Okay. So it looks like the program's coming together real well, so thank you for all the work. It's a lot of good work you're doing on that, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cagle. All right, we're going to transition, and we're going to let Ms. Skinner come up to the table. So our next presentation is kindergarten report cards. And Ms. Candy Skinner, who is our Director of Elementary Education, who's doing a lot of work under this objective, she is going to conduct this evening's presentation. Ms. Skinner?
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight I'm excited to share an overview of the work that we've been doing in regards to the kindergarten standards-based primary report card. In your folders, you will find three sample report cards that I always refer to throughout the presentation, so it might be helpful if you want to bring those out to take a look at those. As part of this presentation, I will provide a brief historical overview that will include the rationale for developing a new report card format, highlights from the pilot implementation in kindergarten at Bethel Manor Elementary School this year, and a timeline that outlines the division's implementation plan that we've developed. To begin the historical overview, I'd like to share a sample of our current elementary report card so you can see the format and components that are included. I have provided each of you with a copy of that report card as well, and then a sample As you can see from this example, each student receives one grade for each of the core subject areas, as well as resource classes and citizenship. Grade options include satisfactory, progressing, needs improvement, and not evaluated. Teachers can also select up to four comments within each subject area. A student, these can be selected from the division's pre-generated list of comments. A student's current reading progress is also indicated within the comments section. The current report card is provided to parents during the interim and nine-week remarking periods. However, our kindergarten students do not receive an interim during the first quarter remarking period. The conversation about moving to a standards-based report card actually began several years ago with the implementation of our new literacy model. Over the past few years, teachers and staff have shared that they really wanted a more developmentally appropriate assessment for grades K through 2, and that would show progress over time for reading, writing, and for math. As you saw on the previous slide, the current report card only reports a quarterly grade for each subject with very limited details regarding anything like criteria that makes up the skills or makes up for that grade. Additionally, the staff wanted to provide parents with more information about their student's academic progress, so to be more of a partner in their child's education. So the committee was comprised of teachers, administrators, and SBO staff, and they utilized a scan to answer and explore the question that you see there on the screen. What are the issues, challenges, and questions related to K-2 report card practices? When the group conducted the scan, they developed a pretty detailed list and then prioritized that list. The items listed here are those that led the committee to the next steps of developing a standards-based report card. Once the committee made the decision to change the format of the K-2 report card, a modified decision analysis framework was used to explore the YCSD report card against samples from five other school divisions within our region. These divisions are marked as A through E on this chart. The criteria that we felt was most important are listed on the left side. They include, we wanted the ability to show progression of grade level standards over time. We wanted to be able to provide a description for each rating and performance scale on the report card. We wanted the ability to provide individualized or anecdotal feedback in the form of comments. We wanted to be able to identify grade level reading status and have the ability to support a home-school learning partnership. So as you can see on the legend at the bottom, the areas that are marked in green are where the report card samples really hit that mark. This activity prompted the committee to develop its own report card. Additionally, the team decided that we would pilot that report card at Bethel Manor Elementary School. On this slide, you'll see the pilot report card that the committee created and implemented in kindergarten at Bethel Manor. I provided each of you with a sample of that as well, and it's marked sample B. This chart on this slide provides a general comparison between the current and the pilot report cards. And as I discuss these changes, I encourage you to kind of put sample A and B beside each other so you can make a comparison between the two. The pilot report card, which is sample B, includes specific standards and substandards. This change will allow parents to see specifically what his or her student, how his or her student is progressing, and also to see how they can help support their student in that developmental progress. The grading key in the pilot report card includes the following ratings: Advanced Proficiency, Proficiency, Developing Proficiency, and Novice. If a student receives an N or a DP, which indicates that they've not quite met that standard, this report card allows a teacher to continually give them feedback throughout the year in those particular areas. Both report cards include the requirement to indicate student reading status, but on the current report card that we use now, our student reading level is indicated as a comment rather than a required field. It's important to note that quarterly comments only appear for that quarter, and therefore they're not included in that final report card that goes at the end of the year. And so when a student transfers, that, those comments don't follow that student. On the pilot report card, reading status will be a required field and therefore will become part of the student's educational records. One of the greatest changes in the report card is the inclusion of a narrative comment section. Teachers can now write a very personalized message about student performance to parents. As I mentioned earlier, the current report card only allows teachers to select predetermined, like, comments from a predetermined list. For example, if you look at sample A, for math, you'll see the comment is doing good work. The pilot report card narrative indicates that the student can count to 100 by ones and tens, as well as backward from 10. Additionally, the student can solve story problems using manipulatives, so it's much more detailed. Another important change between the two report cards is the frequency in which the report cards will be sent home. Because the pilot report card does provide very specific information, and it's based on student development, that the report card will not go home at where they do at this time now. As I shared earlier, the teachers and administrators at Bethel Manor graciously volunteered to pilot the kindergarten report card for the FY '19 school year. In our audience this evening is Dr. Rice, and you see him down there, who is the principal, and Ms. Kelly Lugo, who is a Bethel Manor kindergarten teacher. Ms. Lugo served as a true teacher leader during this school year. She served as a committee member, but she also was instrumental in that grade level implementation for us. Dr. Rice helped support that kindergarten team, and he was also wonderful about making sure parents were informed and communicating with parents along the way. And he also served as a communication person with us here at the school board office. Throughout this year, there have been ongoing implementation meetings where the staff at Bethel Manor made recommendations for the modifications to that pilot report card. Three of the greatest changes are listed on this slide. The team wanted to expand the comments section from 250 to 500 characters. That would allow them more opportunity to give feedback. The teachers felt that a grade of advanced proficiency needed to be removed, and we supported this recommendation since we currently do not provide a rank of outstanding on our elementary report cards that we currently have. And then also, they recommended replacing some of the more general reading standards with more specific substandards. And we supported those. Another positive outcome from the Bethel Manor team was the development of a benchmarks document for parents. The Bethel Manor team developed this sheet on their own for reading and writing. These documents were sent home with parents so they could see the skills and standards that would be taught, and when they should expect to see those on the report card as far as assessments go. This helps parents understand what they may see as a grade and why that, what that grade is based upon. So it was very helpful for parents. Feedback from teachers at Bethel Manor has been very positive. As you can see from the quotes on this slide, teachers like the new report card and the communication it provides to parents. They also like being able to write personalized comments, as well as providing feedback on individualized, individual students. Parent feedback has also been very positive. Parents like receiving the detailed feedback that the new report card provides. They're able to see what their student is, where their student is excelling, and where they may need additional support. Additionally, they're more aware of the skills that are being taught each quarter. So we're excited about that feedback. This slide shows a draft of the final kindergarten standards-based report card for the FY '20 school year. And that's sample C that you have there in front of you. This document was shared with all principals on one kindergarten teacher from each school in April. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive from the group, and they will now share this new report card with all elementary staff this month. During that informational session with principals and teachers, the group discussed some important considerations for implementing the report card, and I'll share this with you now. Over the next month, all school staff will receive an update on the report card changes as I just shared. Kindergarten teachers will begin to develop their curriculum pacing document, which is the document I showed you a few minutes ago that Bethel Manor had created. A team of teachers from each school, along with administrators, will develop the pilot report card for first grade. We actually just did that last week. This will be piloted at Bethel Manor in first grade next school year, just like we piloted the kindergarten one this year. In August, the kindergarten teachers will receive additional training on how to set up their grade book. And also, parents will be briefed at back-to-school night on the new report card throughout our school division. And then, just as we did this year, our school board office staff will meet with Bethel Manor throughout the year to see how that first grade report card is going, but also monitor how it's going across the school division and all of our kindergarten classes. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with this update on our kindergarten standards-based report card, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Like a technical question. So I assume the report card system that we have in place now, teachers are inputting grades and such, and it all just kind of feeds into, this is just doing the same thing?
Yes.
But now we have the, they have the ability to add that narrative and a little bit more stuff? Is it pulling more data that they're already inputting, or will they be inputting more data to?
So they will be reporting out on standards. So where they might have just given a grade for one particular test, now they're reporting out on specific standards. So they do go in and they put that information in, and then they also have the ability to add very specific comments.
So it's still just a matter of, the information's going in?
Yes.
This is extracting more of it to detail it to the parent at the end of the day, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Which I think is pretty cool. I mean, this, parents always want more information, and this will really...
I think it gives them an idea, instead of just looking, hey, they're passing proficient, or they're having some problems, count up to 10, I can work on that at home.
Right.
You know? I like that part, so. And we seem to be getting good comments, not just from the teachers, but from the parents as well, so that sounds...
And I think that's where the feedback has been so positive from parents, because they know where their child is struggling, or where they're doing really well. And they know how they can help them because they can, as you just shared...
Perfect.
Look at something specific, say, well, I can help them with that.
Right. And that's what it's all about, the help from home is what we really need to...
And they know where those grades are coming from each quarter. They can see specifically what they're learning.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation this evening is going to be on the FY '20 meal prices. I'll let Ms. Parr get settled. So Ms. Parr is our Associate Director of School Administration. She's going to provide details, as we do every year, related to meal prices. Ms. Parr?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight I will provide background information for you regarding proposed changes to meal prices for next school year. Each year, our school division participates in the school breakfast program and the national school lunch program. And we follow guidelines provided by the United States Department of Agriculture and the Virginia Department of Education as well. Sedexo, as you know, is our food service vendor, and last year, nearly 1 million meals were prepared. School nutrition is important to us, of course, because of the correlation between good nutrition and academic success. School breakfast programs, such as breakfast in the classroom in our elementary schools, and then grab-and-go breakfast in our secondary schools, works well to start off the academic day for our students. The opportunity to eat a balanced lunch then allows students to receive the nutrition they need to continue their learning each afternoon. So currently, lunch prices are $2.65 for elementary students, and then $2.75 for our secondary students. YCSD receives federal reimbursement for each type of lunch served in the amounts that you see here on the table. The difference in the amount of reimbursement that we receive for a free lunch and a paid lunch is $3. So federal regulations require that school divisions adjust lunch prices if less than $3 was charged for a paid lunch during the 2018-2019 school year. There are two ways that we can meet this federal requirement. We can increase our meal prices, or we also can utilize other non-federal funds, and by using those funds, we would then supplement the school food service account. The amount of the adjustment is determined by using the federally required paid lunch equity tool. This tool is provided to us by the school nutrition department at the Virginia Department of Education, and by using this tool, the formula has determined that a 25-cent increase in the price of breakfast and lunch is recommended for next year. However, because we predict right now that we will have a positive ending balance in the school food service account for this year, only a 5-cent increase is recommended to the price of breakfast and lunch for students and adults for next school year. This increase will allow us to maintain the Virginia Department of Education's required three-month operating fund balance in the food service account, as well as account for rising food costs that are predicted for next year. The table that you see here provides information about current and proposed meal prices for elementary meals. Please note, however, that reduced-price meals are recommended to remain the same at 30 cents for breakfast and 40 cents for lunch. And proposed increases for adult meals is also 5 cents, but no increase is recommended for the price of milk for next year. And on this next table, you see information about current and proposed meal prices for secondary meals. Again, please note that reduced meal prices will remain the same for these students as well. You have in your folders a comparative meal price chart from surrounding school divisions. And school divisions that have already determined changes to their prices have made adjustments by either 5 or 10 cents only. Some school divisions have not determined their prices yet, and we will provide that information for you as soon as we have it available. And a request for approval of the proposed meal prices for next year will come before you at the next regular meeting. So I'm ready for questions now, if you have any, and thank you again for the opportunity to present this information.
Any questions from any of the members? I'm just, I kept it reasonable. We see it every year. I mean, it's just one of those things, it just keeps coming back and back and back. But all these nickel increases, that's impressive versus what other recommendations has come before us in the past? Okay. I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Ms. Parr, for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Parr. All right, our next item is an informational item, so I'm going to ask Dr. James, Chief Operations Officer. He's going to share just some, some information related to the idea of a principal center. So I'll turn it over to Dr. James.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board.
Mr. Richardson, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity, just to share some brief information with you about a concept, I'll call it. That's the concept of a preschool center. Currently, 13 classrooms are used in our elementary schools for preschool education. If you think about some of our capacity issues that we have, that would certainly help us in that regard. Also, if the preschool class were all together, it would certainly help us with restructuring the service delivery model. You have teachers there that could serve as a professional learning community, they could collaborate on what they're doing for the students of that age. Also, as I said earlier, it will give us some additional capacity in our elementary schools. We've had some discussions with county staff about buildings or places that may be available to us, and this evening, I'll just say to you, as we continue to progress along this road, we'll keep you informed about the preschool center and the possibility of establishing one here within the school division. And the questions I can entertain for you at this particular time?
I don't know. Does it be something for next school year?
Not for the next school year, perhaps the year after that, but it all depends on what we're able to find and how we can get things moving. So it'll take some time to get that done.
Another advantage is, when you think about related service providers, we have speech, OT, and PT that are driving to 10 different elementary schools for preschool programs. You have them in one center, you can really cut down on, obviously, cut down tremendously on their travel, so...
Well, exactly, because like Griffin Yates, where a lot of the head start programs are all in that one building, instead of having them scattered about, they have a great benefit up there for that. So to have a, that's a great idea. I mean, it just makes sense, especially if it's going to free up 13 classrooms. All right. Thank you, Dr. James. Appreciate that report.
Thank you, Dr. James. Our next item is our CIP revenue and revenue stabilization fund. Mr. Bowen has some information he's going to share with you this evening as well.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. I wanted to provide you this evening just with a quick update on the work of the CIP committee, and then review a proposed recommendation that we'll be bringing to the board at the next business meeting. As you know, the CIP committee started its work in late August of last year, and what we were doing, we're trying to provide support for Mr. Shearhart and Mr. Herbie. They have, they have a lot of work before them. The county is funding us very well, and they're, they're giving us the money to get the work done. However, we've had some challenges because of the number of projects, and there's only been two people really managing those projects. So what we've done as a committee, we've looked at these projects, we've reprioritized the projects, we've updated budgets, and we've also updated some of the project schedules and timelines. One of the first things that we've noted, and this has been our biggest challenge, when we started the work, almost immediately, we realized we were behind, even going into this year. Ideally, what we want to see as a CIP process here in York County is, we want to have the A&E work done, bid over the summer, so that those bids come back to us in late August, early September. That would be ideal because Mr. Shearhart and Mr. Herbie are in the field most of the summer with all the construction that's going on. So having some of that A&E work bid in, before that summer project or that, the summer workload begins, allows to get that initial administrative burden taken care of. And then, once the project's complete, they, they come back and they can have some opportunity to review those drawings and make any corrections that they need to make, and then those, those projects can then, those drawings can then go out to bid for the construction phase. And ideally, what we would like to see is those construction projects bid, those bids come back to us in, in early to mid-January, where then we can complete the negotiations, make sure that they are the responsive and responsible bidders, and we have the appropriate bond and insurance documents. And then, by the end of March, that we have contracts in hand. That's not how it's currently working. As you noted in the resolution we had earlier this evening, there were work items on there for projects that were being done this summer, and we're just completing that, that work. Ideally, that, again, that work would be done and completed by March. So what we're asking and what we're proposing is that we utilize the revenue stabilization fund to advance some of the A&E work. And this will, again, will provide several benefits to us. First, having that work done in advance will eliminate some of the bottleneck that we see between our capital project staff with the attorney and then with the county purchasing. So tell you what happens now is, all those A&E proposals go out at one time, they come back fairly, about the same time, then all those A&E drawings and projects then go out for the construction bid similarly at the same time, and it creates a bottleneck between the three, the three groups, between our staff, the attorney, and county purchasing. And, and we have to keep in mind that the county purchasing staff, it's a small staff, but they're also serving the county in its role of purchasing. So we wanted to be strategic and try and provide them with projects, not all at one time, but more laid out over the course of several months. So that will eliminate some of that bottleneck that we're experiencing. When we go out to bid early with our A&E, they generally provide us with a cost of what the construction's going to cost. So if we have that information earlier, we're, the committee is better able to present and prepare a more accurate cost, cost schedule. One of the things that we've seen as a result of this booming economy is that our construction costs have increased from anywhere from 25% to 40%. And while we have contingencies built into our projects, these increases are eating into our contingencies. And so when we come up short for, for project contingencies, we're often having to kick one or two projects out for the next summer. Not, not the best thing that we want to do, but that's certainly what we've had to do to manage those projects within our limited budget. And lastly, if we can get out to bid for the construction phase early in the fall, then what we'll see is better pricing, because if we can get to the contractor sooner, then the contractors can better schedule their work, which means hiring the appropriate personnel and then ordering those materials that are needed for our, for our projects, for our work. So what we're proposing here is, I've got a number of items that are on this list. These are all of the current A&E projects on our approved CIP, with the exception at the very last, I don't believe we can see it on the, on the schedule right now, but there's a facility study.
Just scroll.
I'm, I'm, I'll be proposing that we use, everything highlighted in blue is that we use revenue stabilization funds to advance those projects. So we, as you noted, if you note, we group similar projects, so we have parking lot projects, we have locker room projects, we have restroom projects. We would group those together, we would go out to bid, and we would hopefully find one A&E firm to bid on those grouping of projects. And then, we can table those, or we can put those on the shelf, so when the construction phase comes around, we already have the A&E work done, we already have an estimated cost that we've got now a more accurate reflection of what the, the construction's going to cost, and then we can go out to bid strategically over the course of several months earlier in the fall to get that better pricing. What we're proposing is using about $1 million of revenue stabilization funds for this, for the advanced funding of this A&E work. So how do we pay for this? Again, using the revenue stabilization fund, we have approximately 6.4, I'm sorry, $6.5 million in unobligated fund balance in that, in that fund. This year, we're going to deposit another $2.4 million into the revenue stabilization fund, and those funds come from our Impact Aid dollars. So we have a benchmark in our, in our operating budget of $8.5 million. This year, we received $2.4 million above that $8.5 million. Last year, we received $200,000 less than the $8.5, so we didn't make a deposit into the fund last year, but we will be making one this summer for $2.4 million. So certainly, we have the funding available to do that. So that will be the recommendation that we will bring forward to you on Monday.
Let's get two quick ones. How long can something, A&E kind of things, sit on a shelf before you have to revisit and reinvest and have, not a complete redo, but engineering or codes and things change? So how far out do you do something to spend the money not to have to spend it again?
So the projects that we're proposing here, they're, most of them are in 2021, so we're only talking about a year, a year, year and a half out. So I don't expect that there would be a significant change, but there, certainly it could. If the economy continues to do well, it's going to drive up, it's going to drive up labor, it's going to drive up materials, and there, and there could be some, some changes that we'd have to account for.
Just thought about like re-engineering things, or, you know, some code changes, and you got to go back and revisit and redo and have to spend money over again. Other question was, Mark Shearhart, you know, he spins and spins, and he's a pinball machine, a little ball in there, and at what point does a school division look at contracting entity, a person, or to start helping with the management of some of these little small things sometimes, or the, or larger things, so that he can concentrate on what he needs to concentrate on and let someone else take care of something else?
If you recall, last year, we asked the board for approval of a second person, so Mr. Shearhart was actually doing this all by himself for, for many, many years. We've gotten him some additional support. That person is, of course, has some, has a learning curve in, in understanding our facilities, and he's catching up to speed, so he'll be taking more and more of that load off of Mr. Shearhart, particularly on the smaller projects where Mr. Shearhart can focus on the larger projects.
That was, because I know that sometimes large, large projects come with a person that just oversees the whole project with, you know, Mark over there overseeing that person. I just didn't know if that was, if we're getting to that point yet with so many things being...
I think too, Mark, with the, doing the A&E work ahead of time and putting it out for bid ahead of time, we can lock in better on those prices earlier than waiting for the economy to boom even more and maybe go up the price, so that may save us some money too, I would think, by trying to get some bid out earlier.
Right, and then again, using the, the $1 million of revenue stabilization funds, the funds that are currently budgeted in the CIP for the A&E work will then be redirected to the actual construction, to get, to, to put back some of that contingency that we've, that we've missed, because it really, we really just started focusing on adding an inflation factor in the CIP on the out years. And that really hadn't been done in the past. I understand it was recommended that we not take that into account, but we're now certainly looking, and we're adding that on the out years. And let me also address the very last item. This is a facility study, this is currently not on the approved CIP. What we're asking the board to approve here is a comprehensive facility study, which hasn't been done in, in recent memory. And what we mean by that is, we want a firm to look at all of our facilities, look at the instructional capacity, we want to look at the projected increases in student enrollment for several years out, and then also look at the planned development within the county, countywide, and to see where we are, where there might be some gaps, where we might be able to reprioritize our current CIP. So this will certainly give us, I think, a leg up as we move forward and, and helping us to better plan for our, for our needs.
I think that's a great idea, because that's something the county just recently did with their public safety divisions. They did a facility study, and they get ready to build some new buildings based on that, but definitely a great idea to, to see where we stand and what we need.
So I'll also add, if the board approves this, the board, this will go to the board supervisors, they also have to approve the use of the revenue stabilization fund per our agreement.
And we've already, we had some preliminary discussions with, I had some preliminary discussions with Mr. Morgan related to these topics with Mr. Bowen as well, so he's aware this won't become as a surprise.
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Appreciate that.
All right, and our last topic for this evening will be the FY '20 operating budget update, and we'll go back to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Pleased to report that the county has passed their budget. Included in that was funding for the school division for both operating and capital budgets. One thing to note is that in the state's final budget, which this was passed after the school board approved its budget, there was an adjustment to state funding for YCSD. We, we lost $360,500 in the state's final budget. So I'm presenting tonight recommendations to, to account for that loss of revenue. And so I'll walk you through each one of these. The first is, this one does not affect cost, but it's a program, programmatic change. We're reducing one of the 10 teachers we proposed adding in the budget and moving that, adding one psychologist FTE. We haven't had a new psychologist added to the budget in a number of years, and we felt like after the process that this was really needed to continue to provide services to our students. One of the initiatives of the governor was adding funding for additional school counselors. That additional funding added four additional counselors to our budget. We were actually proposing four and a half, and that's what the board approved. However, in the state's final budget, eliminated funding for two of those counselors, so that comes at a savings of $130,000. We participate in the New Horizons Regional Education Center, and their increase to YCSD for special education, career and technical education, and governor school increased our portion $460,000. However, in their final adopted budget, that, that increase was reduced to 350, so we saved $100,000 there. Heading into the final budget that we presented and the board adopted, we were getting indications that there was going to be some change in state funding. And so when I go back, when I put a $145 million budget together, it doesn't always balance to the penny, so I did set aside some reserve to account for potential loss in state funding, and that reserve that I set aside was $125,000, so I am using that $125,000 to balance our budget. There's also an adjustment to expenditures for staff attrition. Since the budget was passed, additional resignations and retirements have come forward, and we conservatively estimate that savings went up to $5,500. And then, we also had a recommendation in the budget to add a data dashboard, and this was a program that we were going to purchase from, from a vendor to give us real-time criteria or access to student performance. And what it was going to look at, it was going to look at grades and test scores, attendance and discipline data, down to the very student. So you could see, if a student was struggling, you could look at, maybe it's, maybe it's, what's the discipline? What's the attendance for the student? What are the scores? It's a very robust system. When we brought our IT department in on some of the discussion, they actually put a system together for us, and it was customized for the needs of instruction. So what we've actually recommending at this point is eliminating that line item in the budget of $40,000. However, we're recommending, if you could scroll down, we're recommending adding a programmer analyst position. This comes at a cost of $85,000, and this position would be to support the IT department in further development of the data dashboard system that they've created. This position will also be used to help with the reporting, providing reports to staff, but also training staff that they can use this system at their school or, or at the school board office, but actually give the tools to instruction and then provide that support to, to our instruction and, to instruction and administrators. So the net adjustment to our expenditures is $360,500, $360,500, which is a reduction that equals our loss in revenue. So we'll bring this recommendation to the school board at next Monday's meeting. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
And the, the data dashboard, the person that can do that, I'm assuming they can write, I'm sure, other programs to extract different data for different individuals and instruction, so some of that would be a very good benefit.
Absolutely, and it's beyond instruction. Really, they can take any of the information that we have in our system, and it's through Microsoft Office. It's the Power BI, I think, Business Intelligence.
Okay.
And they've already given us a little preview, and it's pretty amazing.
Okay, good.
We are still adding 2.5 counselors, school counselors still?
Correct, correct. Yep. Two of the elementary and the 0.5 to York High School.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation, and I think that is true for presentations for this evening. It does. So thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that update, and to everyone that presented this evening. They have great presentations. Appreciate all the updates. And our next regular meeting is on Monday, May 20th at 7:00 p.m., so that's next, next Monday coming up, because the holiday ends at the month. And we're in need of a motion to take us into a closed session to discuss personnel matters, so do I have a motion?
I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second? Second. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Rickimawson, and second by Mr. Ritter, to convene in closed session. Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mr. Rickimawson?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.